Would you like to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to this law in the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our own individual liberty and justice for all. I thank everybody for attending this evening's meeting. It's nice to see people in the audience. Roll call, please.
Karen.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Ron Conne.
Here.
Whitmer.
Here.
I need a motion, item three, motion to adopt the agenda.
Second half.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hudson.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Ron Conne.
Hudson.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four, superintendent's report.
Okay, I'd like to start by talking to you a little bit about PARC. I'm sure many of you have heard the word "PARC" being thrown around in education. Basically, PARC is an acronym for Partnership for Assessments of Readiness in College and Careers. Essentially, we're going to be looking at new assessments in the near future. And the reason I say "near future" is right now they're in field testing mode this year. ODE has contracted with Pearson, and they are putting out new tests in English Language Arts, Literacy, and Mathematics. We are, and I'll talk in a moment about what we're going to field test and where we're headed and some of the different things that are going on, but on the website of ODE, you're going to see these three bold points about why are they going with PARC. And part of it, obviously, is ODE has made a commitment to move this way. Essentially, we're going to move to digital testing away from paper pencil. And I think the state's going to have on their hands a bunch of information at the end of this year to make some determinations whether we'll be able to move forward with that for next school year. So, PARC tests are here to measure problem-solving, critical skills, thinking skills, hopefully give timely feedback to teachers and students on strengths and weaknesses. We know what kind of timelines it takes to get paper or pencil test back. We certainly are in agreement that we think we'll get some quicker, faster results that can be delivered to us in a much quicker fashion. Also determine whether students are on track for college and career. Includes a writing component in every level and allows comparison across schools, districts, and states, which they currently do now with the OAA's OGT test. So, field tests, this began back in 2001. They developed, they released items, they had sample questions released, and now they're in the process of field testing. And with the hopes that in 2015 those tests will be administered. Kind of a timeline right there as to where we are with the field testing. So, why do I want to talk to you about field testing? Well, we have volunteered to field test some of the tests out there for PARC for a number of reasons. We're looking at Joshua Dixon doing Language Arts, grade three, two classrooms, Mrs. Vex and Mrs. Evans, and the high school with 10th grade Language Arts with three sections. One, this is going to give us an opportunity for our students to become familiar with the new types and the test delivery platform. Parents learn a little bit more about PARC. We want to know how, when, at the end of the day. We want to get an idea of, is our technology ready for this test? So, we have servers, and I'm sure if you're interested in some of those details, Jason could probably feed you some information about what he's gone through over this period of time to really get us up and running and be ready to take tests via PARC. Obviously, administrators are going to evaluate this, and the test developers are going to determine some of the reliability of those tests. Our next focus will be AIR, and that's American Institute for Research, as they have been contracted for Science and Social Studies. Those are being done in other parts of the state. So, that's just a little bit about PARC. Again, we think we're going to give a nice opportunity to take a look at how it works technology-wise and hopefully be ready for this. Some of our staff will get a little bit of experience with it. Moving on, business electives or business courses, some of the things that we are looking to do is expand in the high school, some of our offerings, some of our abilities for students to have additional electives in their courses. We are looking at dual credit opportunities, industry standard certifications, and potentially local internships. We really think that sometimes we have juniors and seniors that have fulfilled the majority of their required credits, and that we want to provide some additional options. We want to be able to give a student some potential certification, whether it be in some form of Microsoft or some software package or some business courses that they can go off and either earn money while they're going to school or immediately jump into some positions or some jobs. We think that it's critical we start looking at that internally and not just sending books over to the Career Center and whatnot. We think we can do some things that would be positive and hopefully have a positive impact on our curriculum at Columbiana. So, we are looking at that. I have Thursday, we have scheduled in our mid-meeting a CTE learning, which is an online bank of courses that potentially will provide certifications in different areas, in the business areas. Also, at the end of next week, a meeting with Eastern Gateway. They're providing some information with dual credit opportunities. They're expanding their market in high schools. How this is going to actually look for next school year, we don't have that completely together yet because of some of the missing components. We were simply not going to put courses in that aren't going to provide some of these credits, some of these certifications. So, we want to be able to provide those so students leaving us will have something in the end as they go off either into college or into a career. So, that being said, I had part of Clippers Ave High last week. Last meeting, we focused on our speech and debate team with some of the great accolades that we have with our speech program. One program that I don't think gets recognized enough, I've had children of my own come through, and that's Destination Imagination. Our DI program, Stephanie Baylor is our advisor, and our kids do tremendously well under her leadership. She has several parents who coach teams. I have a list of some of the categories, but we have eight categories where we have qualified for the state DI tournament. And our parents are involved in coaching. I have a list of the coaches up there. We have McGrath at Cross, an area of technical. We have Birch, who has a team in the science category. We have Clark and Clark with Fine Arts. We have Three at Improv. Hill and Smith, I know Mrs. Hill's been doing this for an awful long time, so it's nice. I think Mrs. Baylor pulls her along with her. I don't know if she has a choice. The category is structural. We have two teams, and that's Mrs. Yolm's team and Mrs. Wasawa's team. So, I'm going to turn things over to Stephanie Baylor. I've asked Mr. Buzzer to get her to come and talk to you a little bit about what's going on with DI, some of our recent success, and hopefully give you a real good understanding about what goes on in our DI program.
Hey, I brought some kids with me so I wouldn't be nervous. If you guys would come on up. These are just a few of our children from all DI. And I brought with me a Rising Star, which is our non-competitive group, kindergarten through second grade, but they always put just as much work into this competition as some of the older kids. I brought some elementary-level teammates, and they are going to state in two different categories. I bought a middle-level kid, an other-middle-level kid in their purple shirts, and two of my seniors, who I'm going to cry this year as they go off. They have been with me since the beginning. We started DI here 12 years ago, and then when they started the Rising Stars program, Dylan and Carly jumped in and got started, and now they're seniors. And they threatened me with a terrible introduction. The teams always give a great, you know, "We're ready to start," and I won't even tell you what it was, but Dylan might in a minute. But these seniors that I have, and my son couldn't be here, the three of them have been in DI for 11 years. And they've stuck with it, been to state, been to globals three times, state every year that they were competitive, and I'm really looking forward to them coming back maybe and doing a college-level team one time. I don't know if I've got them excited about that yet or not. But they are truly what DI is. They exemplify so much of what this program is. In fact, when they're doing college interviews, I know this is one of the things they talk about because of the problem-solving skills that DI has. Carly, in fact, her mom just told me about that the other day, so I know that that's true. One of the things that the kids have done over this year, they have helped encourage some of the younger kids. I know that Carly and Dylan have worked with Joey and Finn's team to get them involved and excited, and they watch the older kids and look to see what they're doing so that they can improve themselves. Teams of five to seven kids get together for this creative problem-solving program. They have a central challenge and an instant challenge at competitions, and this year we got to host the competition, so that was very exciting. There was a lot of red shirts running around, and I could not have done this without my parents, my team managers, and all the volunteers we had for the day. It was amazing that everything went smoothly and really did a good job. You mentioned my mom, Sandy Hill. She started the program in Columbiana County down in Hoover Local for four of the new Destination Imagination, so she's pulling me along. Keeping me involved. Our 14 teams this year, two were non-competitive, 12 were competitive, and eight of them are headed to state. Two of the others, one placed second and one placed third, so we're doing really, really well. Very proud of them. And a couple of them had a thing or two that they'd like to just mention about DI. Joey and Finn, tell us what DI is like for you.
It's pretty fun, and I love acting.
I like that we get to get together, make plays, do teamwork, and then just have fun.
Do you want to say "Paige"? Anybody else? Great. I've never known you to be shy. What do you like most about DI?
Well, I like that I get to know more people, and I get to get together with other teams and say, get to know new people.
Right, yeah, and I do get to meet so many kids from other schools. Are you ready?
One of my favorite experiences from DI was when we went to globals one year, and we decided to buddy up with this team from Brazil. So, for an entire week, we hung out with these kids from Brazil, and we had a taco party one night at like 11 o'clock. We invited them over to our hall. We ordered like just 50 tacos from Taco Bell. We just had all these tacos. That was a really cool experience, but within just the school, I've been on the same team with several, Nick and I, Nick Bayle and I, we played in first grade and kindergarten together, and we've grown up all these years, and we're still in DI together. And we do things like DI bonding nights, where everyone comes over to my house, and we'll stay up all night and watch like three movies, or we'll go to Pizza Hut, or we'll go to the movies, and we kind of have a tradition where we go bowling on every New Year's Eve. So, like, over the years, it's just been a really good experience and a really good program to get involved in, to meet other people and learn team-building skills and creativity and problem-solving. But it's so much more than just the competitions. It's like what you do outside of that, that really, that's what it means for me.
You're going to put me on the spot.
I am.
Because I'm about to get weepy here. I mean, hands-down greatest decision of my career in school, elementary school, middle high, was doing DI. Looking at it 10 years later, the greatest experiences of my, well, I guess, social life happened through DI, and there's no regrets that I can find in doing DI or being part of the organization. It was the greatest thing I could have done as an activity, and especially with learning problem-solving and on-the-spot thinking skills. And because she kind of mentioned it, I happened to do our original... Before the team goes on, the judges ask if the team is ready, and so we had planned to see if we could cause our coaches to all cry because we're mean high schoolers. Roses are red, violets are blue, and for the last time, we're ready for you.
And that does make me weepy because I'm not ready to go on yet. But they have been a great bunch, and I'm so glad I still got this little bird right here, just starting as competitors. I've still got 11 years with them, so we're ready to go.
Yeah, they weren't alive yet when we saw them.
Yes, that's true. We did talk about that. When they started, these guys weren't even alive. Yes. We've been doing this quite a while. Thank you for letting us come tonight. We appreciate it.
Superintendent report, that's really all I have. Thank you, DI group, for coming. It's better to hear from you than me, so it's that opportunity for you guys to come and really make us shine as Clippers.
Thanks, kids.
Thank you.
You guys are all awesome. You're wonderful.
Guys did a great job.
Thank you. And parents.
Thank you. Item number five, Nutrition Inc. report, doesn't appear that we have one, let's see. Item number six, Principals' reports.
I'll go first. My principal's report is in Borger in the Dixon folder. Under Curriculum and Professional Development, I just wanted to talk real briefly about the new kindergarten readiness assessment. I did participate in a webinar with Mrs. Doda. You'll notice in previous years, it's been called the KRAAL, K-R-A-L, kindergarten readiness assessment and literacy. Now, it's taking it beyond those basic literacy skills, and it's adding six areas: social skills, math, science, social studies, language and literacy, physical well-being, and motor development. It has a bigger test window as well. It starts the first day of school through, I want to say, November something. And so, it allows the teachers to do still the one-on-one testing when we first start school and have those several days of, we used to call it the KRAAL, but now it's the KRA testing. When we go and do that, and then it allows the teachers to actually start school because there is a section of this kindergarten readiness assessment that you actually monitor progress in small group and large group. So, you take some observational notes, have a checklist, and then you report the kids' scores. The teachers will be trained in this from our state support team, from Mahoning County ESC. They've actually already contacted me to see what sort of training we'd be interested in. They have full online, full in-person, or half-and-half, which they're calling a hybrid. Half of the training is online for the technology pieces, and the other half is in-person. So, I told them that's the one we'd be choosing. So, I do have a little write-up that I'll go ahead and stick in Borger if you'd like to read some more about it. It's totally aligned. The best part is it will serve as the requirement for September 30th for third-grade reading guarantee. We'll be able to report these scores and not have to do the diagnostic screening for kindergarten. Under Professional Development and Curriculum, Ohio State Literacy Collaborative Trainer visits April 8th and 9th to the building to see how everybody's implementing literacy strategies. Race to the Top update. We continue to meet. We're working on progress monitoring tools. The next one is due at the end of March for January, February. I just turned in November and December. And as far as I can tell, we're right on track with no problems. ET PEZ and Student Growth Measure Training is coming up for the administrative team, specifically shared attribution and teacher classifications, the categories that we have to choose for the percentage that teachers are going to take for the other 50% of their evaluation. 50% is teacher performance, which we've all been working on all year, and then the other 50% is student growth. So, we'll have those conversations next week. Standards-based report cards. My four and five do Progress Book. Three is going to Progress Book, and we're going to have a discussion at our staff meeting next week with Gretchen Martin from Access to try to get K2 on board with Progress Book. I am attending the state federal programming conference, April 2nd through the 4th. I'll bring an update back with me. And roster verification and linkage starts soon. Under Student Achievement, we had mentioned about, talking about some technology integration. And as I'm doing my walkthrough, some of the things I saw, there is a link there if you'd like to go on at some point in time. I do have permission from this mom, and I did put the email and the password there. Mrs. Borby gives a choice board of nine or 12 different ways a student can show mastery of her learning objective. So, the kids choose how they want to show they mastered it. And this pow tune, you go on and it's animated, it has music, the kids write, they draw pictures. And this particular one, this little boy showed the teacher how he understands division. And he drew the circles, it's all animated, he talks, you know, eighteen, six, three dots, and it's a good way for her to see, and she can compare those as well, so that if you're looking at growth, she can see the pow tunes he created early on compared to the pow tunes he's creating now. So, I did put all that information there. Another thing I saw with technology integration is in kindergarten, we're using something called Story Maker on the iPad, and the kindergarten kids make their own stories. Now, we have the iPad one, am I saying that right? And the iPad two, if we were to get those, you could actually sync the iPad so the kids can write stories together, and their voice is recorded so when they read their story. But for now, they're just reading them to the second-grade students. But it's awesome. They're writing their own stories, complete stories. Write-to-read week is this week. We've had grandparents in and out the building all week and last week. We've had the JJ Brothers perform. It's all pirate-themed the whole week, so there's pirate music playing, pirate people dressed up. A pirate comes to the library, it's really Pastor Jan, but he comes to the library every day, reads for two hours to the kids, dressed as a pirate. We have a magic show and our Radio Disney parties this week. If you remember, all the way back at the beginning of the year, we entered the Blue Cross Blue Shield Get Fit, Get Active Challenge. If you have 100% participation, your name goes in a drawing, and we wanted to have the Disney characters come and do a Radio Disney dance party. So, that's Friday. I'm sorry, that's Thursday. Under Health and Wellness and Family and Community Outreach, Mrs. Moore ran the Jump for Heart last month, and our goal was, I want to say, $2,000. We raised $7,600 for the American Heart Association and had 100% participation. PTO update, the gala event, made $9,884.50 profit. Under PTO, another thing we're talking about, in addition to bringing back Grandparents' Day and the book fairs, we are going to start family fun nights, and every month invite people to do something, like a movie night with popcorn, something like that. And it doesn't necessarily have to be at Dixon. We can have a family night at a skating rink or something, just to get people involved and get some new faces and ideas. Our preschool state licensure visit and audit was last week, and we are fully compliant. We do need to complete additional training in first aid and child abuse, where safe schools just wasn't quite enough for the state, so we'll be contacting Terri Schaefer for that. We have a new program that Stephanie Patrick brought to our library. It's a library book program to kind of refurbish our library and get some new books. And on your child's birthday, let me see if I have the sheet here. On your child's birthday, and this is the paper that she sent home, they can donate a book to the library, get a sticker placed in the book in their honor, and also get a prize from the librarian if they donate the book. So, that's good. An outdoor learning center, Ron Moser made a proposal to PTO for an outdoor learning center for a 10-by-12 greenhouse, to start doing some raised beds, some gardening out in that. It's kind of wasted space right now, but it would be a gorgeous outdoor learning center behind the gym. It's safe, there's picnic tables out there, the kids can go out there and learn, and PTO did grant them the $800 for the greenhouse. And I just have a couple thank yous there, some upcoming events, and some OAA testing dates. Now, I'm going to sit back and make fun of them while they do their presentation.
Thank you. You seem to have as much going on as it deserves.
Thank you.
I would like to say we like to keep Kim in the dark, so don't tell her about iPad threes, fours, minis, ret the display. She'll be happy with the iPad two, so just...
There's five. I just wanted two.
I'm sure she stays up all night with her head in the frying pan.
Now, we need to be painting these.
The Southside Middle School Good News Report, looking for some items that Kim has not already covered. Today's March 11th, 2014. I don't think she mentioned what the date was. Parent-teacher conferences were held on February 12th. We had many successful conferences. Also, on February 12th, the Spelling Bee was held. The winner this year was Maray Rhodes. Second place went to Emily Hitchcock. Third place went to Marshall Hatch, and our first alternate is Patricia Roncon. The winning word was renegade. And skipping down to important dates to remember, tomorrow night is the County Spelling Bee in Lisbon. Game time's 6:30, and we wish well, good luck to all of our students in the County Spelling Bee. Our sixth graders attended the presentation of Annie on February 27th. School safety. Southside Middle School participated in the statewide tornado drill, and we also had a rapid dismissal practice on February 28th. DI, we already heard from the DI team. And also, an important date coming up, March 26th will be our parent meeting for the sixth graders going to Camp Fitch at 6 o'clock in the Commons. Our Camp Fitch trip is scheduled for, I believe, May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. That's the Southside Good News Report. See what's left. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. And my skinny report, as it's been termed. Under Student Events, the National Honor Society inductions were held last week, and if you happened to attend, the bios were terrific. Very impressed by all the students who made it to National Honor Society, and want to congratulate them. On April 2nd, the Seventh District Court of Appeals is coming to Columbiana. They're actually going to hold two court hearings in the auditorium at the high school. All the juniors and seniors are going to be attending. They're going to partake in two court briefs, a question-and-answer period, and then have the two actual cases. The program's going to run from 9 to 11, and the public is invited to attend. Under Students and Community, Katie Shalick recently won the high score at the high school division of the Columbiana County Educational Service Center Art Show. Katie's artwork will become part of the permanent student gallery at the Career Center. So, congratulations to Katie. Our Interact Club recently got some great news. They were informed that CHS raised the most money per student in Columbiana County for the Coins for Kids campaign. Stephanie Baylor was in here with DI. She also runs Interact, so congratulations to them. Mr. Mook gave you an update on speech, that we had 15 state qualifiers. The following made the top 24. That included Logan Burdette, Armin Finn, Bruce Wigan... That included Logan Burdette, Armin Finn, Bruce Wiggins, and Zach Fringer and Sarah Hunter. In the top 14, we had Clayton Cooper. And among the top six, we had Connor Witheroe, Brad Keeler, Katie Shalick, Haley Martin, and Mariana Davis. So congratulations to them. And just an athletic update, spring sports going strong and working hard. Maybe too hard for some of our kids are coming home very tired, so we wish them luck too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, principals. Public input, well, looks like there's no public input. Item 8, I don't believe we need an executive session at this time. So that will take us to item number 9.
To make a motion to consider approving the February 2014 financial reports.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 10.
Consider approving the amount and rates for calendar year 2014 for taxes to be collected in 2015 as determined by the County Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor as follows. General Fund, 28.9 mils outside the 10 mil limit. A permanent improvement fund inside village, 4.60 mils inside the 10 mil limit.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
Yeah, the mic was second. Okay, any discussion? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 11.
Make the motion to consider approval of the resignation of Dorlan Kelly, Dixon Elementary Club effective February 24th, 2014.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 12.
I move to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach for the pupil activity program for the 2013-2014 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules pending verification of all credentials. Middle school track coach girls, Nancy Turpak. Outdoor education, Carla King.
I'll second that. Discussion. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 13.
To make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for the 2013-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules as listed below.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 14.
Consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2013-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules and director active for the first day work pending verification of all credentials as listed below.
I'll second that. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 15.
I make a motion to consider approving the following personnel as volunteers for pupil activity program for the 2013-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent. Dixon classroom volunteers, Glenda Simcoe and Sarah Rapp. Dixon library, Misty Tindell.
I second it.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 16.
I move to consider approving employment of the following personnel as athletic department gave help for the 2013-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules and with BCII FBI background checks being waived for these temporary positions. Ron Detwiler, Darcy Quinlan, and Rick Panel.
I'll second that. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 17.
To make a motion to consider approval of the 2014 school district calendar as provided with this agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Item number 18.
Make a motion to consider approving an agreement for services...
Sorry. Item 18.
There you go. Make a motion considering approving an agreement for services for fiscal year 2015 by and between Access Council and Columbiana Acceptability Village Schools for technology services provided with this agenda within...
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 19.
Make a motion to consider approving a memorandum of understanding between the Columbiana Acceptability Board of Education and the Columbiana Local Association of School Support regarding alternative makeup days.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 20.
I move to consider approving the Columbiana High School Program of Studies for 2014-2015 as provided with this agenda.
I'll second that. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 21. No actions required on this. That action will be taken at our next board meeting. Item number 22.
Make a motion to consider approving a contract with chosen, one of the below-listed companies for resolution of the Southside Middle School group issues.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second that.
We need to choose one. Discussion. We now need discussion? We need to select one of the three. So my idea would be discuss it, then we'll go back on and amend that motion so that we can include the selection that we've chosen.
Well, after looking at several of the different roofs and talking to several roofers and things, I feel as though it would be under the best interest of the school district and the pupils within to go with the Duralast roof because of the longevity of the roof, the warranty that's on the roof, and the operation of which it will take to remove the roof and replace the roof, allowing us to have a 20-year roof on this building, on the middle school building.
Any additional comments?
No, we're weighing our options of what it costs and with, like you said, with the warranty and removal of the roof. I mean, I think that's very important, and I agree.
No other comment. We talked about Duralast, we talked about pitch. Are we just picking the vendor?
The vendor.
Or are we saving the options?
We're picking the vendor. I think that some of the discussion we had last time was about taper. And even in talking to other roofers, the additional money for taper is to keep the... You're going to have ponding on a flat roof no matter what. Taper will reduce that ponding. It will never eliminate it completely, but it certainly will reduce it. That is definitely the direction we want to go. You know, by approving this with Duralast, you're essentially telling Lori and I we have the ability to move forward with Duralast and make the appropriate decisions based on that. Any discussion that needs to happen, I think if there's anyone that doesn't think that taper's the way to go, maybe here's the time to talk, but I'm actually in favor of taper.
Let me ask you this with taper. We're talking pitch, right?
Well, I mean, yeah. It's going to be very gradual.
I got to just ask a couple things, okay? Because I started thinking about this. As you look at the top of the roof, and there's drains, right? There's drains only in certain areas of that roof, right? So we start pitching it up as a pitch. What happens is, is when we start pitching a roof high enough, because as you grow, for every, how many feet is it? You have to move it up an inch, right? That's what it is. Kind of fizzled a bit, you know, I was going to get to you earlier on this. But so, as we look at some of these roofs, some of these areas going along the edge of those walls are 17, 18, 19 inches tall with insulation that's built up in order to make that pitch slide into one drain. And even with, even with the pitch that comes up...
Well, I think there are more than one drain on each...
Well, there's some. There's two or three drains in some of them, but I'm saying in some of these areas, it has to be so high, and there's so much buildup that's there, and it's insulation, that's what it is.
My discussions with Bo, who we went over the taper fairly well, is that the taper will not be up and beyond the exterior walls of the building. They do not need to be up beyond what is currently there between the top of the... There's a metal aluminum edge on top of brick and block around the whole, every piece of that building. And where that taper will come up, you're talking about maybe about this much height difference, just from my own self-being up on the roof anywhere from here, and depending on the metal inside, might be right around here.
I just always... This is what I want to say, is if we taper this, and we're moving this roof, and I've looked a little bit online too, all right, that you're still going to have ponding and water in areas of that roof.
You will. You have an above-ground pool.
Right. It's what it is.
And when you first fill that pool up, when it's empty, you can see where the water... And it's not, never going to be flat. But you can first see where that water fills into. The idea is to have some type of gravity. If you notice on the above-ground pool, at the walls, you have a buildup. Because when that thing freezes, the pressure that's put on that, you have to have this sand base on there to keep it from pushing the bottoms out. Well, you're going to have a small taper, and if you only fill that pool up about two or three inches, the highest part of it is not going to go beyond that sand piece. In this case, you're talking about trying to push or drain, not giant amounts of water at any given time. I mean, some of our hardest drains are not going to fill up a section this deep unless we have, unless we have clogged drains, but it's not going to fill up a section this deep on the top of our roof. So the idea is with the taper, is to just get that gradual majority of the water off and push towards the drain. You're still going to have some areas where even the taper hits a flat spot, we're going to have a little bit of bonding. You can't get away from that. If we stay away from the taper, you are going to have more ponding. Because where it's flat and where there might be maybe, it might be off just a centimeter, and it doesn't get quite to the drain, you don't have anything, any way to push it off into that drain. The taper will push it off into that.
So the warranty is exactly the same, 20 years whether or not we taper or we don't.
Correct.
Right. So I was reading online, there's a thing called, what's called cricketing, the called roof. And what it does is it takes it, and instead of tapering the entire roof, okay, towards those drains, what it does is it takes sections and it allows it to come towards that drain in different areas and brings it towards it. When you cricket the roof, it reduces the cost of the buildup of the tapering of the roof. Does the tapering of the roof make the roof longevity any longer? There's nothing that proves that it does, nothing.
Well, you're going to get a 20-year warranty regardless. The difference is this, if you get ice and water damage on that roof in that 20 years with the flat, they're going to come out and repair it. And we're going to have repair areas, repair areas like you would your pool, where you take a patch and you patch into those areas. So we'll have more of those, this is just my belief, just based on my conversations with them, that we're more likely to have issues where we have to have repair that will be under warranty. Over that period of time, based on what kind of water can sit up there and create damage. Now, from the other end of the spectrum, I think the taper is going to push more of that water off, which is going to lead less likelihood of issues.
That would make, it would make sense for that to work. But my only thing is, is we're listening to one individual, which is Bo. If we decide to go with the Duralast, I think that we hear the discussions of these different contractors and get their opinions. Because the only thing I look at is it's approximately, what, $100,000 more?
Seven, about 75.
$75,000 more to do this taping of the roof. If all these contractors have the same opinion of the taper of the roof, then I would say okay. But based on the conversation we had in this last board meeting, I mean, I really look at some of these contractors and go, holy smokes, they all gave us different ideas of how many roofs are up there and how much damage was up there and all this. So I don't know what to believe at this point, other than us coming to a conclusion that what's going to be best based on several different contractors' opinions. And I, you know what I'm saying, Don?
I just try to look at it from a logical standpoint.
Right. It can make sense, right.
And to me, the logic tells me that the tapered roof is going to eliminate water. And if my thing were to eliminate, it's going to bring most, if not all, of the water to the drain, which the drain carries it off and gets it off the roof. Without that, you know, I don't know about this cricketing or whether or not that becomes an option even under the state contract or whether they'll do that.
According to the web under roof.
I don't know enough about cricketing. The two options I was looking at, one, that one wasn't cost us any more money, just get a roof on there. And then two, try and get the water away from the walls and areas that it may lay or lie. You know, from that standpoint, I felt like the additional dollars to be spent on taper would be the way to go. And, you know, there's no guarantee that we're not going to have to tear off the roof again in 20 years, but given the previous roofs, they've lasted much longer. You know, one of the conversations I had with a different contractor, and Scott, you heard from the gentleman as well, it may be your insulation, your taper is fine, that you take that, for lack of a better term, liner, that Duralast liner off the roof and put a new liner on, and you're not replacing the insulation. That becomes a lesser cost in the long run, once we determine we have to make some decisions to fix a roof after 20 years. But in the meantime, that warranty for 20 years is going to put us in position to not have to tear it off and spend dollars towards it. I would recommend we go with the taper, but I would look into the cricketing, cricketer just because you want me to look at that and give a better idea of if there's a truer cost savings by doing it that way, and if there is, and it makes a lot of sense to move the water off, you know, we can meet again.
Well, I think tonight we can talk about it again, but I just, all I'm hesitant on is these people that come in and present us these roof ideas, and they have all these different ideas. So now we're listening to Bo, and not that he's a very reputable contractor, but how do I know that what he's telling me, it makes sense in theory, but how do I know that's the best way?
I got to believe based on the types of roofs that they install, those are the two... According to my conversation with Bo, the two major roofs they install, flat, no buildup insulation, or tapered with the buildup insulation. And those are the two major roofs they install that they have an outward... And those are the two major roofs they install that they, they have and are working in the industry, and that's what they, they say to me. Now, again, I'm not a roofer. I can't tell you for certain that one's truly that much better based on the warranty, but I'm just looking from a logic standpoint that I think tapered makes sense to me to get the water off the roof and not let it lay up there.
Any further discussion on the roof this evening? Would anyone like to amend a motion that's already been made to actually include the name of the type of roof of the three choices we have? Ron Cahn, you want to amend your motion?
Sure. Thank you. I'll second that. That we go with Duralast or whatever it is.
Let him figure it out.
If we go with Duralast, I believe that that would be the amended motion in my view. Any further discussion on the amended motion? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Ron Cahn?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 23, president's report. We'll keep this rather brief. First of all, I think it's great what we've done at this school, Destination Imagination. I know that Mrs. Baylor has been involved with it, and I also know that her mother started at Beaver Local. And to see kids that have been in it since they started school is pretty amazing, so it is a testament to how good a program that that is. And I'm just really happy that we have people like those two, two women especially, that have taken the time and effort all of these years to get kids interested, and really to keep them interested throughout their time in school. That is amazing. I'm very interested to see how the park testing goes and the field testing. I think it's great that we are here, this school system going to participate in the field testing. The expanded business courses, I think that's a great idea. My only hesitation, as a board member, that a CCC is that since we are funding the Career Center, that we don't try to duplicate courses and have the taxpayers paying for them twice. That's the only hesitation I have with expanding, but I think way back when I went to school, we did have more business courses in Columbian schools than we certainly do now. Principal's reports, amazing what all goes on at Dixon and the other two buildings. I believe that the idea of family fun night, that's something I remembered when my own children were in school. It was a great thing then, and I think it's great, the idea of bringing that back. The spelling bee, I'm happy to hear that we have such good participation. Good luck to the students that are participating in that. And coming to the high school, you know, I think that's great, the students that are participating in National Honor Society, congratulations to the new inductees. The idea of the 7th District Court of Appeals coming here is really a great idea, and whoever organized this, congratulations, kudos to them. I think it's a great program, and if I can possibly make it, I've written down, I would love to be here. I think it's going to be very interesting what the high school students see of what appellate courts do, because of nothing that they would have experienced or seen on TV, because it's not as exciting as a lot of the legal shows that we see on TV. Congratulations goes out to Katie Schalick, that is fantastic, how accomplished she is in art. Again, Mrs. Baylor and the Interact Club, that's fantastic. I have been in Rotary in the past, it was difficult to get the club organized, she's done a great job with it, and I'm so happy to see that it still is going strong. The speech qualifiers, Speech and Debate has been around since my daughter was a freshman in high school, and it's wonderful to see that program grow and continue to flourish the way it has. The only other comment that I have this evening has to do with the relationship between this school system and the community at large. I think that we in Columbiana have a fantastic school system, and that credit does not go to this Board of Education, it goes to the teachers and the administrators and staff and the students. I think we have a fantastic community for city government. And I'm just a little bit dismayed to hear comments coming from those meetings with regard to our roof project. Hopefully, this spirit of cooperation that has been present in the past between the city government and the school system will continue. I would like to thank everybody that was here this evening. It was nice to see all of the Destination Imagination students. And really, that's about all that I have this evening. Thank you again for being here. That would take us to item 24, OSBA Legislative Liaison Report.
How to report?
Item 25, OSBA Student Achievement Liaison Report.
Actually, I just wanted to add on two things that haven't been mentioned yet. Our girls' basketball team just wrapped up their, their season and was very successful with the district runner-ups. And really, what I wanted to highlight is we had a player on our team, I'm sure Don Mook would be humble about it, Bailey Mook was named co-player of the year in our county, which is, which is an outstanding honor. And I just think it's great because I filmed for the basketball team, I watched all the games, and it couldn't be more deserving that a player that works hard and is very unscullish and is great for our program gets such an award. So, thank you. That's it.
Item 26, Columbiana County Career Center Board Member Report. No report this evening. Item number 27, date of next board meeting, Tuesday, April 15, 2014, 6:30 PM, in this high school media center. Item number 28.
Consider an executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22 for the sole purpose of consideration of any of the following matters as listed below.
I'll second that. And that would be the matters listed below.
Compensation, employment.
Those are the two matters. Very good. I have a motion by Mr. Karen, a second by Mr. Clark. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Cahn?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 29.
After the executive session.